9/23 to order. This meeting is obviously being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the Internet by accessing TownHallStreams.com and selecting Bucksport. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slessard@buxportmaine.gov or during the meeting by calling four six nine seven three six eight. This also is a wonderful time to make sure your cellphone is not set to go off. Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Eastman.
Here.
Commissioner Morrison.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette.
Here.
Mayor Stewart is absent. Commissioner Ormsby is absent. Commissioner Bishop.
Here.
And Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Thank you. An item not on the agenda that I'd like to add if there isn't any opposition. I had actually requested of the mayor before our meeting got canceled due to the weather a couple of weeks ago is just a brief moment of silence for former councillor Joel Wardwell. Joel passed away last month and was a councillor here in town for a number of years. At the, I almost said at the beginning of the century, but that is what it is, in the early two thousands.
Nineteen ninety.
That's when he started?
That right there.
Okay, yes, he did, yes. Yep, so I, he was also councillor while I was on the school board here and I always, I was very, just as a personal note, I thought even when Joel and I disagreed, he was very respectful in that entire process, so friends with his children and he gave a lot to this town, so just a brief moment of silence for Joel, please. Very good, thank you, everyone. Next item is presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't see any. Next item is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have the minutes from the regular town council meeting on the ninth of February. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those. Question? How would the council like to proceed with that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor? Opposed, thank you. Next, receive and review correspondence. We have two pieces, two items to review. One is a Verona police call on February the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, as well as an Orland police call on March the third, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on those? Good. Next is ordinances to consider or introduce. This evening we have the second reading of change of allowed use in the commercial three zone. There is a public hearing for that later on in the meeting. All right, item seven, discussion items. We have three there. The first is regulatory review committee update from earlier this evening.
Yep, we met and discussed creating an ordinance around landfills and asked the town manager to bring that to the next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Along with a moratorium?
Yes. That wasn't part of the meeting, I didn't know.
It was a request.
Okay, and we requested a moratorium to give us time to draft an ordinance.
Very good. Questions on that?
That moratorium's for the next meeting, correct?
Yep.
Second item under discussion items is review twenty-seven Main Street proposals referred by the Economic Development Committee.
Good evening. I believe you should have those proposals in your packet. They were also part of the last packet. One of the developers is here. If you have any additional questions, Mr. Kane, two proposals, twenty-seven Main Street.
Yeah, I wonder where we don't have two councils here. Pat, would you be adverse if we tabled it till the next meeting where we don't have two councils here?
Certainly, I'm here and ready to talk, but if that's your purview.
Well, I mean, I listen to the rest of the council, but nobody else heard.
The only issue I will bring up is that we are not going to have the mayor here at the next meeting either.
And we're not asking, there is not going to be a resolve tonight, but what we would like the council to do is to look at the projects and either agree to move one or both, or if it's the council's periphery, not to move any forward so that we can have a resolve. Because we, you can't make it, you can't view a resolve because it's not on the agenda and we didn't want it on the agenda because we want it to be transparent. So everything's in there for you and we knew.
Yep.
And Mr. Pepin was unable to make it due to a family emergency, so.
Think we should move on?
Okay.
Move on, yeah.
I can speak, I mean, I was at the committee meeting.
Oh, you're more than welcome to come up too whenever you're ready.
Yeah. With Mr. Pepin, the only concern I had with his is he, you were there, Steve, too. I mean, he had six structures that needed access to Route One.
Yeah.
And I don't see the ability to get six entrance permits on a state road right next to one another.
I had a lot of questions about that. Proposal that. I think went unanswered.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The only additional item that I would add, which I just received when I came in tonight, is I had asked for input from Jay Laffer. I understand that he had done some of the work on that site for the town. The concern, of course, was the hill and what they may bring when we try to develop that. So I have one copy that was provided to me, but basically, to paraphrase what Mr. Laffer says, that there are no known concerns in that hill and that it is proper for development.
That's good to know. I can start off by saying something. Please. And I don't mean any offense by what I'm about to say, but I wasn't super excited by either proposal because I've been hoping for a full commercial, but I see that that's probably never going to happen because if somebody was going to develop that, I think they would have come by, you know, come through by now. But I think your option is the best option I've seen, where you do have two commercial spots. Me personally, I think I'm willing to raise the white flag and put this twenty-seven Main behind us. I don't see it going full commercial. If it was going, I think it would have by now.
Well, and, you know. What, I guess, the only concern I have, Pat, is it doesn't add to, I mean, it might, the two commercial buildings are an advantage, but it isn't, I think, what we had hoped for. But we also know we're running into challenges. And part of this is, I think, we're looking for more housing, is that correct? And to replace the tax base that we lost? Is that the mindset of others?
That and many other proposals we have, they wanted the property free and tax-free. That's not fair or feasible to the town people, so.
Yep.
I did like your proposal. It's the best one I've seen personally for this law.
Well, so if I may speak to that, please. So when I came up with this proposal, when this land, I've been working with Crystal, Helen, I'm sure most of you know Crystal. She brought this piece of prop, specific piece of property to my attention after we went through Bucksport, looking at many, many parcels. And so after meeting with her, I reviewed the town assessment that you, which was very impressive, by the way, whomever did that, I knew some of them, but not all of them. But, you know, in the end, I agreed with their assessment that it just was not a viable project to do. So based on that, based on input from your staff, which I gotta also commend, your staff has been very welcoming, forthcoming, responsive to me from day one, which is refreshing to come into a town, to offer to invest in your community. So kudos to them. They are certainly an asset to your town and I appreciate it. But after reviewing the proposals that have come before you, your assessment, talking with the staff here, which is how I came to the proposal that I came to, which was a blend of high-end housing, which was pointed out in your assessment, and also the commercial spaces. So that's how I came to that realization that this was maximizing the full potential of that property to accomplish both goals. So that's how we came to existence. You know, I have had initial conversations with some business folks in your community. There is some interest to occupy some of those spaces, so I'm hopeful that if we can build it to soup, to whomever that is, that maybe we can spur some room growth and really give you a diamond on Main Street to attract other potential businesses or homes here. So that was, that was my goal when I, when I did this, was to meet all the goals for the town and the community, and this was the best option I could come up with.
Very, very well done. Thank you.
Pat, in that time since economic development, have you had any opportunity to speak with any engineers about what that would look like?
So I have, I have had initial, and you'll see in there, there's a letter from Haley Ward, the engineers at Bangor, they're a company that we deal with routinely. I actually engaged them back in January about this property when this became a possibility. They're comfortable with my proposal, they're comfortable with the project, and if we are selected to go forward, they will do the engineering for us on this site, so. And you'll also see a letter in there from our financial, one of the financial groups that we work with, that this is a financially viable project and that we are able to develop this, so.
As a whole, I like the idea. We need housing, that's been a big, that's been a topic in general, we could beat that to death, so there is housing in this, but the commercial spaces, you know, in a perfect world, the idea of some sort of glamorous commercial scenario that has not become a reality, these two here might just be that icebreaker that starts the snowball of moving things along down Main Street with one business could move, start to rehab another, something's got to give. And the confidence that this outfit has compared to some of the other things that we've seen come through in the past, some of the things that have gone on, that I saw happen during the planning board. It's local, it's backed, it's put together, and it's the best thing I've seen for that lot yet.
Yeah, nothing really to add, except to say, you know, back to councillor Rankin's point, I don't think this should be the driver here, but it is a valid point that this is a issue that has been, for lack of a better way of describing it, a can that's been kicked down the road, down Main Street for a while now, and I don't think that should drive a decision or, but maybe in a way it should too. I think, you know, this is, again, this is a viable proposal that begins to meet not only just some of the visions that we may have had for this five years ago, or five-plus years ago, but also addresses some needs that we have in the community as well. And I do have to be honest, I do like the, when it comes to the housing piece, that it is, to use your phrase, more high-end, so I won't shy away from that either, so. Yeah, I certainly see potential here.
What are we looking forward to?
I'm looking for which proposal, if any, you would like me to put in a resolve for the council to support at the next council meeting.
I would make a motion that we put Mr. Kane's proposal. I would second that.
Moving second. Any questions from the public?
I'd just love to see a packet if you have an extra.
Oh, of course. I'll share one with you.
Anyone on the council have anything else?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor? Opposed? We got everybody?
Got it.
Twenty-third, seven o'clock.
Twenty-third at seven o'clock. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The next item is Services Committee update from earlier this evening.
We had two, two candidates tonight, one for Parks and Recreation, Emily Fitzgerald, and one for Zoning Board of Appeals candidate Jamie Bowden. We had a motion to appoint both.
Questions? Next is agenda items, two there. First is resolve twenty-twenty-three dash forty-two to approve police mutual aid agreement with all Hittap County Police Agencies. Assume everyone's had a chance to read through that. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
I'll be okay. No, 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 please don't apologize. I'm sorry.
We all follow.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Moving second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Thank you. Apologies.
And resolve twenty-twenty-three dash four-three to end use of the town-owned former shooting range out on Route Forty-six. Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving second. Questions, comments? All those in favor? All right, next is resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. We have three. First, we have the appointments just mentioned earlier to the appeals board, Jamie Bowden, and to the Parks and Recreation Board, Emily Fitzgerald. We'll do the appointments first, and we can do them individually too. We can do Jamie Bowden first, to the appeals board.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moving second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? And then to the Parks and Recreation Board, Emily Fitzgerald.
Motion approved. Second.
Moving second. Any questions? All those in favor? And then we have a resignation from Jamie Bowden as a reserve dispatcher.
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Not seeing any approval of quit, claims, discharges, and deans. The next will be the town manager report.
Thank you. First, budgets have been submitted by department heads, and I'm in the process of reviewing the submittals and building a budget. I did meet with RSU twenty-five superintendent, and he indicated that the school budget this year was going to be, in his words, challenging. I will have a budget book for each of you, as well as our online versions, because I know that you have preferred that in the past. Community and Economic Development Director Rich Rotella, harbor master Mike Ormsby, and I met with representatives of the trustees that will be working to implement the Holtrachem settlement regarding mercury contamination on the Penobscot on February twenty-eighth. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the process the trustees will be using in two areas. First is the implementation of the remediation defined in the court order, and the second is in distribution of funding for community-based projects. We had the opportunity to discuss with them our shovel-ready dock project, and they were also favorably impressed with both the town's knowledge of the Holtrachem situation and that the work that the community has done since the closure of the mill. There's a lot more to come on this topic over the next year or two, but I will tell you, it was an excellent meeting. I think Rich would back that up. Mike is going to take them out on the river, and we've got, we've established a really good rapport with that, the principles of this committee.
Where do I find the minutes of that meeting?
They were not, it was a meeting with the trustees that came in. It was an appointment, a meeting may be the wrong term, but it, minutes were not taken at the meeting gym. It was just a.
All right.
But there will be meetings, and there will be minutes, because they're going to be public scheduled meetings to discuss this whole process as well. And everyone will be notified of those. Pump stations two and three. Initial estimates show that replacement of pump stations two and three could cost a total of approximately five million dollars. We are applying for grant funding through state and federal agencies for this project to see, there's a lot of money out there right at the moment. We're going to see what we could get if we decided to move forward with these projects. And finally, as you may have heard in the news, sledge disposal has become a significant issue, and the price of disposal, if you can find a disposal location, has gone up tremendously. I've attached a letter to this report that the Bangor City Council has sent to the DEP and the legislature about the impact of this very serious matter. And I concur with much of what they say. This is where we've been provided with contact information for a disposal area in New Jersey as a potential option for ours. We have maybe a month left of storage before we're going to be in a serious situation in order to, the, if you saw in the news that the issue at Juniper Ridge had been solved, it hasn't. The, there's a temporary fix by sending it all to Canada, which isn't going to last for a long time. And then everybody's, communities are in much worse shape than we are that have larger systems and little storage capacity.
Are we presently sending sludge to Juniper Ridge?
No.
I didn't think so.
We do, we do not, and, but the carrier that we used is not accepting either because Hawk Ridge, which accepted sludge, is full. That's not accepting anything. The, Juniper Ridge has cut theirs back. Clients that utilized waste management in Norridge Rock are still okay. They're, they have, it's primarily the, those who had contracted for sledge disposal with Cassell, which includes Bangor and Portland, and some very large entities that generate a great deal of sludge that are now in a really serious situation of where that can go, and, and failure to extract the sludge from your system will kill your system because the bugs will die, and then the whole process stops. Or it offloads into whatever water body your outfall goes to. So it's a significant issue, and the legislature talked about it this past week, but it was sort of, I was disappointed to see that it was crisis averted, because I don't think this crisis has been averted in any way, shape, or form. It's, it's been temporarily transferred to Canada, which isn't going to last forever. Anyway, I bring it to your attention because whatever we do with it following this, it's going to be about four times anything it's ever cost us.
What are we doing with it right now? We're in a.
Right now, it is stockpiled at the, at the sledge disposal site in, that we have on Upper Long Pond Road. There's a pad and a roof system there that allows them to stock.
I've seen that. I just, I didn't know if we were still using that.
That's, that's what we use, and they haul from that when they were hauling it, but the vendor that we've used has, has not returned phone calls and is not picking up at the moment because I believe they used Hawk Ridge and that's full. And all the trailers that they have are full. I mean, this is, it's a. When you see budget numbers for sledge disposal that, for a system our size is, are huge, it, it would be because the problem isn't solved, we're just moving it out of state somewhere, because there's not an in-state solution for it at the moment. And that's all the good news I have for this evening. I'm sorry. Well, you need to know this, it's going to, you know, when you see the budget and.
Don't want to learn it in the budget meeting.
Well, I'd rather tell you stuff. It's like the, the challenging RSU number. I want you to be prepared for what you.
I don't want to learn that in the budget meeting. Yep. No, thank you.
I'm following this closely in the BDN. Yesterday, Maine calls out Cassell's response to sledge crisis. There's a lot going on. I mean, it's a huge problem. And those fees are going to go up, 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 following Bangor daily.
Any other questions for Sue? Next is set public hearings and or public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. The first is a public hearing for change of use in the commercial three zone. A public hearing. Hey, members of the public, have any comments on that? Counsel. What was the public hearing? Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moving second. All those in favor? Opposed? And McLeod, the next is McLeod's restaurant liquor license renewal. Do I open a public hearing for that, too?
No.
I didn't think so.
Motion to approve. Second.
But I've already missed one motion, so I wanted to make sure I missed the name. Thank you. Moving second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Next is discussion of items not on the agenda for a council of public. Start with the public.
I'd like to let you know that I was able to submit an MPI request for the mill and fill payment improvements on Central Street. That's from the intersection of Main to just beyond Broadway where the approved sewer work is going to be done. We got it in under the wire with a couple days to spare, so, and answer will be forthcoming from the DOT if we've been approved next month, March fifteenth. Excuse me, so a week from yesterday.
Is when you expect the answer?
That's when they will have an answer. They've changed their process apparently in how they do these MPIs now, but it's still a fifty-fifty match. Anyone have any questions?
No.
We also submitted a grant for courtesy board inspection funding for Silver Lake that we should be hearing about shortly that would allow that program that we partnered with Tadi Pond last year, and they can't, couldn't do with this yet, so we have had a, a group of people who exhibited interest, and I submitted a grant proposal to fund that this year. Haven't heard back from it, but we did submit it.
Did, did we receive a copy of their report? Seems like I remember seeing.
Of their, of their monitor report?
Findings when they, when they did their.
Yes, I think we did.
I think so, yeah.
Tadi Pond gave us a, how many boats were inspected, how many they removed stuff, or, yep. And that, that kind of information is required by the state to participate in this program if you have a grant, so all of that gets generated and you'll have all that information.
We can own the tax dollars, being used to something.
Any other?
The, the grant funding that we're requesting for the pump stations two and three, what? Any idea how much?
I want it all.
That's kind of what I was hoping, but it is.
Well, seriously, I, I know that sounds flip, but the town has submitted one grant for congressional delegation through the, for the dock project, and that's, those are fully funded projects. And the problem with applying for that, for this project and that, is it puts us in competition with ourselves for money. They're not going to give us two that are that big. But there's significant money at the state level that's through the, the whole infrastructure federal program that has come down, and we're looking to see that, whether or not rural development, which is what we did, our sewer treatment plant, has a grant that's sufficient to make it interesting, and then there's the clean water money that's federal, that's another. I, certainly if the funding wasn't, there's nothing that binds us to accepting any of this, but I think with the amount of money that's out there and the state, we had a very serious problem with pump station two, which is thirty-five feet deep down here by Hanaford, and is old and needs considerable work to upgrade it, that we need to at least figure out what the financial landscape looks like now in a time where those kind of funds are more available than they have been in. those kind of funds are more available than they have been in thirty years in terms of municipal government, so. It, well, if nothing else, give you an idea of what, you know, if we can't get it all, what it would look like in the best-case scenario. Um, or give us an opportunity to have that information and put it in next year for the congressionally designated project. You know, there's more than one way to look at this, but, but we can't do it if we don't have the information and all that kind of stuff.
And one last thing, where exactly are we at with the animal shelter? Are we looking at designs?
That's the, that's the
That's what we're doing right now, right?
To get a design, and, and the location has still been identified at, as, um, behind the town garage, but then somebody suggested that out off.
Donovan.
Hmm, the school, i- i- out in that area is, is another area where it could be located, that it would be not close to Mr. Ha's developments.
Put it in the gowels.
Excuse me?
Put it in the gowels.
Um, any other members of the public?
Where were they thinking, just what?
I'm going to have to ask you to come up here to the microphone because we're.
Where were they thinking of putting the, uh, at what school would they put the alternative location for the animal shelter? Did you know? You just said school, I just cur- curious.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the, the town owns land up as you go up Miles Lane, the, the childcare center is there, the town owns land out in back of there. I guess that's the best way to, to phrase it, and the access is off by where you go to the skating rink off and in through there, but we own land back in there. There was a discussion at one time of the childcare center maybe moving and they, I don't know where they went, but they, moving and relocating, but what, the, the goal was to keep it close in the community for the animal shelter with the potential for a dog park with it, which was, has also been discussed. But the new housing development near the transfer station has is unhappy about the noise and, but it's in, in, it, it's next to a great big metal wall that acts as a great, you know.
Anyone else on the council? I've got everybody? All right, thank you. Uh, next is upcoming public hearings, resignation of topics for committee assignment, and scheduling of any committee meetings that we have for next time. Anything we need to do?
You have the moratorium that you probably want to look at with regulatory review before your council meeting, but we can have that committee meeting and then you can have it at the council meeting.
We'll do six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
We have economic development on Monday too.
This coming Monday, yep. That's at six o'clock on Monday?
Yeah.
Yep.
Six.
Six.
Monday, yes.
Yep, thank you.
So that's the twenty-third's the next meeting, right?
Yes, yep, thank you.
May we have an infrastructure committee meeting for the RSU request for the, uh, Aspire?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, that's if we do regulatory review at six, we could do infrastructure at six thirty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right. If there's nothing else, the next item on the agenda is the last item and it's adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.